Just reading.
Oh, I thought it was last Monday. I may be going through a cycle, but it's hot here. Oh, Lord. It's hot. Y'all think it's hot in here? Or is it, I mean, I might be going, maybe that time of the month for me.
Right. Did you wear that work on here?
I'm hitting on about three cylinders. All right, ready?
All right, board members, thank you for coming early today. Appreciate. Appreciate the early start today. We've got several things to do. We're gonna start out with two quarterly reports. Marty Flott is gonna give the quarterly budget update and then Anthony Grosh will give the student assignment update and we will move into our presentation for ORED regarding the student assignment study. So Marty?
All right, good afternoon, board members. Today I'm bringing to you the first quarter update on the present finance and we'll flip right over, starting with what will be included in the quarterly revenues expenses per state. Current expense on student aid, federal capital outlay, school nutrition, AT tax. I'll share you the cash balances as of nine thirty twenty five. I'll share what information we have on charter school enrollment. I'll share some areas to watch and then answer any questions that you may have. So in state, first quarter, the expenses, keep in mind state and federal, the revenues and expenses tend to match because we're only able to draw down what we expend out for those programs. So the first quarter expenses on state is twenty-five million, two sixty-five, seven sixty-three. Compared to last year, that's actually eight hundred and twenty-three thousand, seven seventy-seven less for negative three point six-nine percent. Current expense revenues for first quarter is seven million, one forty-one, five eighty-two. That's a hundred and fourteen thousand, four sixty, less than last year first quarter or negative one point five-eight percent. The expenses for this year is five million, five twenty, two thirty-eight. That's more than last year by six hundred and eighty-six thousand, three seventy or a fourteen point two percent increase. One thing I'll point out there is if you keep in mind last year, first quarter, we had ESTRA funding and so when that went away, some of those contracted services came over the load for this year. So I contribute that as part of the difference there. Federal, first quarter is two million, one fifty-five, oh fifty-four. Again, ESTRA we had in place last year and that's gone away. So that's one million, three twenty-two, oh twenty-seven less than the prior year or a negative thirty-eight point oh two percent. Capital outlay, the revenues first quarter is six hundred and seventy-five thousand, nine forty-five. That's one hundred and thirty-one thousand, two eighty-nine more than previous year or a twenty-four point ten percent increase. The expenses for this year is five, first quarter for this year is five hundred and thirty-four thousand, oh two, which is less by six hundred and five thousand, seven sixty-four or negative fifty-three point one five percent. With capital, that can just depend on what kind of summer projects grade we're doing getting in. So that's, that's really the difference there in the capital. For school nutrition, first quarter, revenues is two million, twenty-nine thousand, eight twenty-six. That's two hundred and forty-eight thousand, three twenty-eight more than last year or thirteen point nine four percent. And for the expenses is one million, six ninety-five, eight fifteen. That's thirty thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars more than prior year or a one point eight-two percent increase. For AT tax, revenues is one million, nine thirty-four, nine sixty-four. That's two hundred and thirty-one thousand, four fifty-seven over prior year or a thirteen point five nine percent increase. The expenses is two hundred and ninety-one thousand, nine twenty-nine. One hundred and thirty-six thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars less than prior year or negative thirty-one point eight-two percent. And last year, if I'm thinking right, they had funded some special one-time projects and that's probably the difference from the first quarter last year to this year. Cash balances as of nine thirty twenty-five, current expense at eight million, seven forty-three, oh thirty-five. Capital outlay had one million, one seventy-three, six ninety-four. School nutrition had six million, nine fifty-six, oh twenty-nine. And RCHL twenty, school tax had two million, two twenty-six, one eleven. Keep in mind too, cash fluctuates throughout the year just depending on revenues as they come in and expenditures as they're going out. So charter school enrollment, I provided you one, two, three, you've got you four years of history and current year. So in the blue, this is the history from the four previous years. I'll just point out the twenty-four, twenty-five, we ended with one thousand, six hundred students, attending twenty-three charters and three virtual charters for a total of twenty-six. This year, so far this is reported and we've got eight charters that have not reported today as of Friday. I kept waiting and hoping we'd get some more information, but as of Friday, we still had eight that had not sent in their first invoice. So currently we have four twenty-five RCSS students attending a total of twenty-seven charters and three virtuals. So that's up to thirty now compared to twenty-six last year. The budget increase for this year was a one hundred students. One noticeable difference I've seen so far is the virtual academies. So far we have one hundred and eight RCSS students in virtual academies. That's plus thirty-nine over prior year. And then year-to-date expense so far, we've got a hundred and seventy-three thousand, three fifty-one. And that basically equates to one hundred and thirty-six dollars per student per month for the charter fees that we're paying out. So areas to watch, contracted services across the board. So anywhere that we're doing contracted services, that would include our custodial, EC, lawn and transportation. We're monitoring those month by month. And federal funding, that's really up in the air. So titles one, two, three and four, we're gonna keep an eye on that and see where that falls over this next federal budget cycle. Now I'll answer any questions. So we're talking only three students from our virtual academy is actually attending virtual charter for this school year?
No, we have a hundred and eight students. You talking about from the virtual academy? I don't think virtual, no, I don't think we have that mapped out with us every morning.
No.
How many were in virtual? It's just a hundred and eight total.
Okay. It's a thirty-nine year.
Thirty-nine in the prior year.
Okay.
So for, you know, that could be some of the, some of the children and it could actually be none of the children, it could be somebody's come back that has our address and we don't.
So the big jump was Pine Springs Preparatory Virtual Academy and that was a new one to us last year. Last year they ended with eighteen and right now we've got fifty-seven students in there. To the rest, the NC Cyber Academy and the NC Virtual Academy, which were two state-sponsored kind of virtual, they basically flip-flopped. So we had a seven student decrease in the North Carolina Cyber Academy and then a seven student increase in the North Carolina Virtual Academy. So they just sort of flipped numbers there, but then the Pine Springs was the big jump from prior year, eighteen to fifty-seven.
And I don't think they didn't already really grow once they got to where they were. I don't know that those two state charters have really taken off. They're kind of in the state right now range.
Yeah.
That's just my memory.
Thank you.
Board members, I want to just say this too. Dave and Marty did a great job. Thank you, Marty and the cables back there and Marty's staff, rest of Marty's staff. But we need to be mindful, as a staff we will, and I want to make you aware of what we're monitoring. We're monitoring a lot of conversation about Title I, Title II, Title III and Title IV for future years starting in twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. And that's critical funding for us, all of those areas are. So we're hearing different variations of our descriptions of what might happen to those things moving forward. So just know that will have an impact. Glad it came through this year, you know, we waited a while on some of those after the turn of the fiscal year, July, or our fiscal year, July one. But we are hearing some conversation about how those will look next year, it could be looking different, so. Next up, we have Anthony Grosh. Kind of fitting that Anthony's gonna present this today. This is our quarterly update, but then in a minute it'll roll into some deeper stuff that's been done by the group in NC State. So Anthony, I'll open the floor to you.
Good evening, board members. Tonight, or this afternoon, I'm presenting the student for the assignment report for the first quarter. As a quick reminder, the report outlines two primary areas. First, the number of student assignments from our, within our school system and the admissions and releases to and from Randolph County school system as well. So as a reminder, we'll look at the table. Each school is listed individually, district-wide total at the bottom. And moving left to right, you'll see the name of the school, the school's capacity, average family membership based on enrollment numbers as of October second, two thousand twenty-five. Also notice the pre-K numbers are included for the six elementary schools, Markham, Asterix, Level Cross, Liberty, Ramsey, Altamont and Tavernacle, Luttrell. And then following that, the capacity percentage for each school based on ADM. Randolph High School is highlighted in red, is that's a pressure capacity over ninety-five percent. So that's one that we'll be watching especially as far as any transfers or reassignments into Randolph High School. The next column is the number of mobile units for the school system. We have seventy-six mobile units currently and the next two columns represent students reassigned within our school system. On the light green, the students that are into a school and then the light red are students that have asked for reassignment out of that school. And then for a total of one thousand and thirty-seven that have a reassignment in or out at the bottom of that column. Those are numbers always matched because those are just students that have shifted around within our school system. The final three columns show student admissions in Randolph County schools and the students domiciled, which are students domiciled in another school unit outside of Randolph County school that we've admitted them into. So again, the light green being admissions positive gain into those individual schools and the light red being a release from that school into a different school system. And then the very last column, the darker red and green, the overall net for each school. So you see an overall net at the bottom, admissions three hundred and eighty-three, releases four hundred and forty-one for a minus fifty-seven overall net, which compared to first quarter last school year for twenty-four, twenty-five was sixty-one net loss. So, so for the better of the four students, I'm on the reassignment report.
Board members, the constant here is now, this chart compared to others, is this the first one for twenty-five, twenty-six school year? Randolph High School's still in there in the nineties, but if you look, everybody's dropped out of the nineties. Except for Randolph Public College High School at ninety percent. So some things are coming back, back away from the nineties on all of those. That's what, one of the things caught my eye, one percent capacity, of the capacity used, so.
As far as transfers, did we not have a percentage that we kind of was cutting it off at?
If they're over ninety-five percent, if they go, they hit the nineties, we usually, if they hit the nineties, we, they're on the watch. But if they hit ninety-five or higher, we don't let anybody in, it's not, doesn't have an address there.
Well, the reason I was asking is about Randolph because it looked like they gained thirty-three more.
Well, that's, that's what got them to ninety-seven probably. Now they're on the watch and if anybody tried to reassign any of them.
So when you look at releases, I suppose the one at the southwest area, that's probably charter school mostly, right?
They're not releases.
I mean, I mean not, one of the releases, what is that, when you release them to go somewhere else or?
A release only applies if you go to another public school system. If you go to a charter or a homeschool or to a private school, you don't have to have a release. But if you go to another public school system that's not aligned with your address in North Carolina, you have to have an official release. That's, that's involved.
So like when you see South Mount with thirty-eight, would that be? Where would they go?
They might have gone to other, they would have gone to other school systems.
With Sunburn?
Maybe gone to actual county or somewhere like that.
Ashville City probably.
They don't say guilt for it with a parent, you know, they may, for various reasons, but they are not in our system and they've gone to another. Anybody in the release column, in that release, they've left us to go to another public school system.
I got you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Board members, so we can spend the rest of the time on the presentation today with ORED. I just want to note, I'm gonna kick down to the bottom, our overview of our events. Just note that the next two, the next board work session is at four o'clock. That's senior note number one, AS is January twelve. That's when we have commissioners here. And if you look all the way down to item number nine, we went in and adjusted that for May eighteen, which is the employee recognition night. We moved that to four o'clock for the reception, four thirty for the ceremony, which gives us the hour we've always had. So I don't want to interfere with, with the next groups. I thought maybe just go ahead and close that up now so we don't have to come back to it. Before the guys come up and I'll let Dale introduce them, just want to point out that in our phase one plan that was presented starting in, in the spring of two thousand and four, one of the items was the student assignment study. And so this is the first half of what's happened. So we are holding to that. We've, we gained, we've obtained land, officially obtained land for the two schools. We said we were gonna replace at some point when funding was there, Liberty Elementary, Randolph, Randolph High School. That is secured now down completely now, correct? And now we're into the student assignment study. So if you look back, as I've said to some of you last week or all of you when I talked to you, we're gradually chipping away because we talked about replacing, student assignment study and renovate. So we're kind of coming through that a little bit. So I'll be quiet now because these guys know a whole lot more about this than I do and I want them to share with you what they found in their study of our school system. So Dale?
Good evening, board members. I want to welcome Thomas Dudley, Brian Doctor and Matthew Palmer. They are with the Institute for Transportation Research and Education Center at North Carolina State University. And they work specifically with operations, research and education laboratory for short. ORED is what we call it. I want to thank Seth Julian, our safety compliance officer who is here tonight. He's been a big help on this project which started back in early March. We've had the opportunity to sit in on meetings with Thomas and Brian, with the different municipality planning and zoning departments in the county as well as the county planning and zoning. We've heard census data, approved housing developments and even proposed housing developments that are, you know, in the pipeline for the county. I want to thank Winnie Anderson and Jamie Smith in transportation as well as Meredith Weaver, Melissa Kidd and Kelly Neer in student testing because they provided a lot of the information these guys had needed at different points in this process. So, Thomas, I'm not sure who's starting. Okay. But I hope you find this information interesting and Thomas, thank y'all, Brian, thank y'all for being here.
And board members, as a little bit of a disclaimer, I'm just gonna tell you, I believe in what these guys do. I remember this, all this stuff in the mid to late nineties when I was a top four student at NC State University. And you're gonna see in a minute how extensive their work throughout the same one time span. So looking forward to you seeing what they've discovered about our school system.
Thank you, Dr. Gani, Chair Cook, and the members of the board. My name is Thomas Dudley and as was mentioned, I'm joined by my colleague, Mr. Brian Godfrey and Mr. Matthew Palmer. We're school planners with ORED. And this afternoon, we're gonna be sharing the results of the study that ours were conducted on behalf of the school district. We're gonna start with a brief introduction to our organization. From there, we're gonna highlight, and I'll hand it over to my colleague, Mr. Godfrey, to discuss the land use study at a high level with the process and the results of that. From there, he'll hand it back over to me and I'll be discussing the membership forecast, including the culminating school level forecast, which we call the out of capacity. Now our parent organization is called ITRI. We have a lot of acronyms here and I apologize for that. But our parent organization's ITRI, the Institute for Transportation Research and Education, which is part of NC State University and housed on NC State Centennial Campus in Raleigh. ITRI's been conducting research-related transportation in the state for over forty years. Now our smaller group is called ORED and we're an unbiased third-party evaluation research group that helps deep-ly decide school planning in the state. We do that through the services that you see listed there in bold. And if you'd like to learn more about us, we have links to our site there. As you can see, we've had the privilege of working with quite a few districts over the history of the program. And for right now, I've been handing it over to my colleague, Mr. Godfrey, to discuss at a high level again, the land use study, with the process and the results.
Well, good afternoon and thank you for the opportunity to learn more about Randolph County. A foundation of our work is the land use study, which is a full assessment of all the growth and development going on around the county. Essential information if you're planning for the future. And so to begin that process, we spoke with the local experts, those public officials and planners, economic development utilities, just to make sure we had a real sense of what is actually happening on the ground. So I want to recognize those folks here and thank them for their time for this important project. So a real high-level overview of some of the themes of this land use study. First up, rooftops, new rooftops. We're seeing a healthy pace of residential development across the county. Now naturally, that's Archdale and Trinity, but more recently, we're seeing new proposals from Liberty, Ramsey. We're seeing it as Ashboro, the city of Ashboro expands into Randolph County schools zone. And we're seeing more and more developments continue to be proposed. Now some of these are at a higher density perhaps than many traditional neighborhoods. So that's smaller lots, many single-family homes, but in addition to that, townhomes as well as new apartments being proposed. So we'll return to the subject of residential development in a moment. But we also want to make sure we account for some of the other draws for new families moving to the area. Commercial and industrial development, this is an exceptional story of success here in Randolph County. Toyota plant up and running, still a couple thousand jobs to go, still coming in the future for them. And overall, a very robust manufacturing sector, there's that new Ross facility coming up in Randolph. And then of course, other major projects nearby, notably Wolf Speed down sixty-four in Silver City. So exactly what you want to see in terms of generating jobs, bringing new folks into the county. And then finally, want to talk briefly about infrastructure. Water and sewer utilities are the primary determinant of what can be built where. There are a few different authorities and providers around Randolph County. Overall, a pretty good situation, big improvements coming, including doubling of capacity at the Randolph and Lake plants to twenty-six million gallons per day as well as the new water line getting run out, sixty-four east of Ashboro to, to Silver City. So returning to the subject of residential growth. We, on the backend of this project, account for what we call the development inventory. So this would be all residential projects that are either proposed or approved, but not yet fully built out. Everything in the pipeline. And we take those numbers on the backend in geographic information systems, GIS, to calculate future student growth. So you see here on this map displayed with blue housing icon, all those projects, both large and small, each one displayed here. There are approximately forty-seven residential developments pending, representing about forty-five hundred homes still yet to come. You'll see on this map as well, the Ashboro City Schools outlined in red for the purposes of our project, everything in there is excluded. But again, this is a considerable growth. This is not only occurring in Archdale and Trinity, but again, across a few different communities in the county. Yes, sir?
Brian, I got a question for you. So you've got a development or two sitting on, on the red line. So there's a possibility down at the bottom of the Ashboro City Zone that part of that development could be Ashboro City Schools and part of that development could be Randolph County school system. What's cool?
Yes, sir. Appreciate you bringing that up. I believe that's known as Hillcrest Farm. It lies on Vestal Creek, which is the historical boundary between city schools and RCSS. We have accounted for that in our numbers, everything south of the creek will be the big deal.
First now lived that where the house next door went to one school and we were the first house that went to another. So I wanted, it looks like there may be two of them sitting on the, and maybe a Thurman up top. So that's, that could be a new dynamic we've not dealt with as well.
Yes, sir. Yeah, it, it's funny because you'll be a, you'll be annexed into the city of Ashboro as they continue to grow outwards. We're seeing a lot of activity on that southeast side of the city, Zoo Parkway, Old Cox Road. Popular area, of course, for families being right there by that new sportsplex, being by the zoo. So expect continued municipal growth. Randolph County really has all of the, the features you want to see in terms of attracting new families. Affordability, good jobs, high quality of life. And what we're seeing here is all of the conditions are present that are protective against some of the factors we see around the state that are contributing to enrollment decline in other communities. This is a healthy picture of growth. So with this residential data in hand, I'll pass it back to my colleague, Mr. Dudley, who will cover some of the data analysis that goes into our forecasting.
Thank you, Mr. Godfrey. So in addition to the development inventory, which was just sharing, the list of residential projects that are going to be coming down line in the future, another critical input for us is we're looking at developing the membership forecast as the count of resident lab births within the county. These are an important leading indicator and the reason for that is a large share of these births will become your kindergarten students five years down the line. And what we see looking at the most recent data available here from the State Center of Health Statistics is stability and in fact even some growth over this timeframe. Now, another important factor for us too is your membership history. Here it's being presented at the highest level, at the district level. But this is something that we look into at the school level, we look at it at the grade level and by grade by school to make sure we're modeling for how cohorts typically move through your system in ways that are reasonable and appropriate. So here you can see this information is hot off the press. We include it at the, the right side here. This is the, your month one information from twenty-five, twenty-six. So again, this is hot off the press here. We appreciate the, the coordination with the district to be able to transfer and show this data to you here today and include as part of the forecast. So with that, we'll move on to the first slide showing the forecast. And this is a summary slide just showing the graph of how it's broken down per level. So that dotted line you see is where we are today. Everything to the left of that is the observed data of how many students you've had at each of your levels over the past five years. And then to the right of the dotted line, we have how many students you can expect at each one of your levels over the next ten years. A lot to be shown in one slide here, but what you can see zooming in metaphorically is the growth begins at the elementary level. And that's very congruent with young families moving into the district. Maybe they have elementary-age students, maybe they will in the next few years or, you know, perhaps in the longer term than that. But that's where the growth will start. And you can see a, a sort of cascading later in the middle school level and then it'll take longer for those cohorts to move up and make it to the high school as well. So growth at the elementary, middle school during this timeframe and then we're expecting a, a longer-term growth at the high school level. So we also break this down in a much higher degree of detail, which is in that deliverable, something we call the out of capacity table. Here, this first slide is just the elementary level, but we have analogous slides for the middle and high school next. What we really like about these is they're a quick visual way of being able to see where your facility needs are and where they will be in the future. So we're carrying away from left to right. We have the name of the school, we have the capacity of the school, it's divided by the school district. We have the hot off the press, month one information for how many students are there today. And then each of those columns off to the right are how many students you can expect in the future at each one of these schools. The coloring is based on utilization as defined by the legend off to the right. And that just, the, the math behind that coloring there is just, it's the number of students divided by the capacity of the school. So if you look at a school that's red for a given year, that means it's, that indicates an overcrowded. So, if you look at a school that's red for a given year, that means it's, that indicates an overcrowded. That's a school that's more than five percent beyond its stated capacity for that given year. Now, we have on this slide, as I mentioned, the elementary. Next, we'll be moving on, show the middle and high, as well as the system total. And so, these are the standard ways that we convey and talk about enrollment, and enrollment changes over time when we present the districts across the state. This is meant to be a reference for you and a guide as you look to make further decisions. We can also, we also presented this in a slightly different way, which I'll highlight on the next slide here. So, one of the drawbacks of all this is there is a lot of data to have up on the screen at one time, and it's also split across multiple slides. So, here's another way of, an alternative way of presenting similar information. But instead of showing that raw count of, okay, four oh-two students at this school and this sort of thing for every single year going out, what we've done here is summarize that previous information in a slightly different way. So, here, we're looking at utilization, both the five years down the line utilization that's forecasted, and the ten years down the line forecasted utilization for each of these schools. And as well, for context, we add the current utilization too, to give a sense of where things are today. And this shows the elementary, middle, and high schools where you are, and how we expect that to change based on the factors and the forecasts that we've produced as part of this study. That is our last slide, it's the conclusion of what we have. We are here for questions. We're here to also just be a part of any additional discussion that you have on this topic. What questions are there for us?
Do you have any information on, I know URA is considered six-twelve, but do you have any information separating the high school and the middle school from URA Ridge?
So, that's in our model, it's not being presented here as far as the summary information, but it is part of the model, so we can definitely pull that for you.
Go back to the, go back to the previous screen. So, I think one of the things when I look at it, board members, is you're talking about URA, where is yours in the bottom? Okay, that's six-twelve combined, and when you look over ten years, it's not getting out of three hundred. That's a concern to me. That's, when I start looking at this, because I thought you might want to see the percent full, that's why those other screens came. But now, go back up to the one before that, Thomas. So, look at Farmer, over ten years, Farmer's not coming out of the two-hundred range, and that's concerning.
In that one on the slide, back down to the bottom of the high school, is it projecting Southwest to actually decrease over the next ten years by a hundred-some students?
Yes, it is.
What was the reason for Randallman High School though? You're talking about, what, twenty percent?
Well, that's what they're looking at, you know, what's being built up there, diverse, the projections, I mean, their, their action, this is all actual data. So, Randallman High School, that Randallman Zone, as long as I've been here, was pointed out as one of the fastest-growing zones all along that, because a lot of people commute in to Greensburg, what I was presenting back when I was on the EDC board. But that one doesn't surprise me, Mr. Cover. I will tell you, the one, if you went back three years prior to twenty-five, twenty-six, or four years prior, was really surprising, but you, you see it, Mr. Cook, we see it on ZC too.
Can you read those numbers?
I can't read the years.
Trendy, I'm the only one that can't see them, as many of y'all said. I guess I'm the one that's wasn't here.
Trendy High School got very small, and you see how quickly it's caught up, and it's really taken off. Look at eight-forty. That's, that's, that's one that caught my mind. I said something else that caught my mind, just as it's current.
The white column is current.
It's the capacities.
Capacity.
The white column is the white column.
The first green column is current this year, month one.
Yeah, the first green column is.
So, Trendy Middle has a capacity of eight-hundred. And Mr. Cook, you probably remember when we signed off on that, one of the last things, I remember which board member said, "Do not build Trendy Middle School too small." And I think that's showing up right there, because if we didn't have eight-hundred capacity, look at that, we're seven oh-six on the far end.
Let's look at this, can we look at the elementary, back to the elementary? You know, one thing that stands out to me, we're talking about, you know, building a new school in the Liberty area, elementary. But if you look at those elementary schools in that area, including the middle school, there is just, it's not there.
Yeah, but Liberty is being replaced, and Liberty and Randallman are both being replaced because of the facility as well as not just necessarily.
Yeah, I get that, but.
That's, that's, you look at that, if you look at the numbers, yeah, you would have a thing of, why don't we? So, I think one of the things you can see off this, Mr. Cover, is what, are there some schools in that replacement? I don't see there's anything just glowing hot other than Archdale, which, there's some history there about how old it is and whether that will come into play, replace it down the road. You see some hot-spotted Trinity Elementary, and then obviously the Randallman High School and the Trinity High School.
But if you look at Trendale, which is just a few miles away, that's, yeah, three hundred less.
It looks good.
And we can alleviate some of that with our.
Some of the other schools.
See, Trendale was, Trendale was in the two-hundred part.
Down on drinks, yeah.
My first year, I think it was two-nine-five.
I was in that, really, I'm going to.
That kind of pops in my mind, but, but I think you've got a case for, you've got Archdale Elementary. You've got a case for replacing it with a bigger facility possibly? Go down, go down, Thomas, to the others. You've got a case for Trinity High School, obviously renovate it or replace it for a bigger facility? And I just, just, some things have popped out of my mind.
Yeah, those look like they're the immediate needs.
So, I think you got a case for, and Thomas, we're going to send this to them, so you'll have, they'll have, we'll get, they'll get these to you. And there is a subsequent report because with this goes a lot deeper.
Yeah, and today I can see it.
That report, that report actually talks about, goes inside each one of those forty-seven developments.
It is, they are identified, some details related to this, yeah.
What's in each one?
But is the population of those developments, is that mostly townhouses and apartments?
It says, yeah.
It says all.
It's mostly, mostly single-family, still what we're seeing across the county, mostly single-family. But we are seeing an increased appetite for townhomes as well as apartments. Some of y'all may have heard of new proposal in Ramzor for hotel, townhome, single-family, you know, apartments in Randallman. So, higher-density residential development than perhaps what we've historically seen. Now, some of those housing types, we account for on the back end of our demography. You know, apartments tend to have a little bit fewer students than a single-family neighborhood, we account for all of that on the back end.
Dale, you'll get that report to them as well, so they'll have, you'll have that, it's about a twenty-five-page report.
Yeah, too, if we go back to the map, showing. Lay that map there. Could, would it be possible to add, like, location where our schools are on that? Or maybe Seagrove, or?
Absolutely, yeah, we'd be glad to. So, part of what we, some of the questions we commonly get with these is, you know, can you show the attendance zone? Or can you put, you know, the school that's affected in a, in a table or something like that, so it's a little clearer to know, you know?
Would that be in the optimization piece we do next?
Yeah, that we can, we can provide to you, you know, immediately, because that all feeds into the numbers that you see on the later charts. Yeah, we'd be glad to do that.
Are you guys able to track new charter schools and, anyway? A new charter school would pop up, and it could potentially pull from our district. Are you able to back to that end of these numbers somewhere, or?
So, the best information we have comes from DPI on the topic of charter schools, and so it's, you know, we do get a little bit of heads up as far as what applications have gone into DPI. So, we are aware of, you know, the, the one in Siler City. We are aware of the one that has, that'll be opening next year in Southeast Guilford. So, we do, we do have some information on that, but the information is limited though.
So, we have knowledge, we now have knowledge of the one in Southeast Guilford, just on the other side. I mean, I don't know how far over the line it is, but, so that, that could. That, go back to high school again. What concerns me about the, the one in Southeast Guilford is Providence Grove High School. If you go down, go down to this percent use, you know, like.
Forty-seven?
Yeah, it's forty, it's, it's, that's where it's going to be ten years from now, and that's without the impact of whatever that Southeast charter could do.
Fifty-one in five years, so.
So, that's, that's a concern in there. If you look back, if you go back up to the actual enrollment numbers, you look at Providence Grove, just as a comparison, you could put Providence Grove in Eastern, just as a comparison point fit in Providence Grove. That's a comparison. I was looking to see if, I don't think that's the case anywhere else. I mean, you could clearly fit, URA Ridge can clearly fit in southeast, southwest Randolph High School.
And, and the middle school is definitely just a ten-year management.
In the middle school, where is that? Southwest Middle, four thirty-four. Adam seven fifty-four, and what's the capacity, Southwest Middle? Ah, you're over it, you know? But that's, that's taking all the, that's just taking the whole group at URA Ridge. That's counting high school kids and. Can't remember what the numbers were. A guy wanted to ask what, where they were split with URA Ridge. I want to say one forty-seven, one sixty-four, or something like that. I know they're at three, when you've got the number, they're at three seventy-two. So, when you look at that, I look at that chart, my mind wanders a little bit about, you know, sites and gives you an idea of where we need to expand a campus, you know, or what might happen, or or no, absolutely no, then no, no expansion.
So, by saying, right, as far as projections, if you took out the, the, I guess the northwestern sector there were trending, so every school declines then, other than those two?
I think you can see that on that percentage field next.
I'm just going from current.
Yeah, exactly.
The ten, I'm talking.
So, if you look right there.
Starting point to finishing point there.
Yeah.
They either hold the line or decline.
Yeah, I think that's a pretty, pretty accurate observation. I mean, holding, holding it or going down, but when you take the AT Zone out.
So, obviously, we need to focus on Archdale-Trendy area. We need to focus on Archdale-Trendy area.
I'm looking at Ramzor.
I'd have told them that.
Yeah, I said, as soon as I was coming in, right there, that new development, there, it, aren't there like three things going on there, Thomas, in Ramzor?
I'd have told them that. Late draft.
Developments, yeah. So, yeah.
First of the season, I know.
Yeah, that's verges to your point. When I looked at it the first time, if I looked at it and said, the theme I see, I, I think the board has been, and I said this to y'all, some of y'all last week, when I was talking to you, I think the board's right on, I think you're at a point of replacing or renovating. I don't know that you've got a lot of situations of growing out additional school, which is what Phase One was talking about. And then, you've got some hard decisions with, you know, when you talk about renovating Eastern and Southwest High, you got a hard decision, do you renovate a Trinity High or do you go to New Trinity? You know, talking about that, do you renovate a Archdale Elementary, which is probably a pretty landline, Claire? So, probably can't gain any more room, so do you go to New Archdale or do you replace? And do you replace or do you renovate?
How much of Archdale Elementary is, you know, like, it's been renovated, when was that renovated, like?
Two thousand and two. So, oldest school we had.
Huh?
Park Street Elementary is the oldest school we had. So, it's nineteen thirty-five.
Is that older than Liberty? Wow.
Last renovation, two thousand and two.
It don't look as old.
Could you not alleviate some of that for rediscovering?
Like the Wheatmore Trinity, could you not rework some lines a little bit, just to kind of alleviate that population? Tom?
We'll have to do that. Of course, there's a lot of development going over around Hopewell and all that, it'll be feeding Wheatmore. So, what you have is, when you have sixty-two, the original thing was like, one side of the road will go to Wheatmore, and the other side go to. And it's amazing when you're riding down sixty-two, just how many houses is what. It took the other side a little longer, but then you got your Belburn Road and all that, which is close to Hopewell Elementary, they're building a bunch of, it's crazy up there, to be honest with you, how it's taking off. But I mean, then you have English Farm, which was, I'm not sure, do you know how many houses they're supposed to build there? Is it two thousand, five hundred, or, it's a bunch, English Farm? Right now, that'd be Trinity High School, so that would throw in.
For what elementary?
An elementary, probably, I guess, Archdale.
Uh, English Farm is approximately five hundred thirty-sixty.
Five hundred, yeah. Tended on, like, like, houses, like, when you have townhouses, like, there's a lot of those going up. So, what percentage, I guess what I'm trying to say, you're going to have more kids come out of a house than you would a townhouse? What do you think, more than likely, or?
That's right. On the back end of our work, as I mentioned earlier, we are calculating what's called a student generation rate, or SGR, which is a fancy way of saying, you know, how many kids can you reasonably expect from this many of this type of home? Traditional neighborhood, you know, you got a hundred homes, maybe that's thirty to forty kids going to RCSS. And typically, what we see, what we, what we have found in Randolph County on the, on the back end of this is single-family home subdivisions, you know, they typically have the highest student generation rate, a little bit less for townhomes. But again, those are typically owner, owner-occupied. And then, for those folks who are renting in modern apartments, typically a little bit lower for that as well.
There's a bunch of townhouses going below John Lawrence and Seerut, Seerut. And they stalled it for a while because of, one of the investors took the money. Took some money, a lot of money. So, now, somebody else has come in and they're starting back up with it again. I'm not sure how, technically, yeah, but they took the money and run. English Farm would be a big deal, though. But you know what people, like, what's happening, especially, and I guess it's happening everywhere, but one of the most popular builders, like, would build custom houses that I know. I was talking to him the other day, and he's, you know, he'd been in business for twenty-five years, and has a really good name. But now, he's hit the point where he can't buy the land because the Hortons, the big companies come in, these work, and they buy the whole, they buy it all, and they develop it all with their own. And he says, it's like it's cutting the little, it's like the mom and pop, the little guy out. He said, and that's, that's. the little, it's like the mom and pop, the little guy out. He said, and that's, that's the next big thing he's worried about. He said, I really think in the next five years, I'll just be remodeling. I can't for, afford or buy because they can't compete with that. I mean, they'll, they'll buy the hundred acre, two hundred acre track and turn it into like, English Farm. English Farm's where I learned to work hard. I primed tobacco there. That was the hardest job I ever did in my life.
Not changing the subject, but when will, or will Highway sixty-four, will it be four lane to all the way to the county line going back toward Lexington?
I don't, I don't know that.
I'd be toward Lexington?
Yeah. I, I don't know that.
Well, I know they, I know they're working, you know, they're all the way back to the, to the, basically the city limits coming into town off sixty-four.
Well, you would've thought when they did the overpass, you know, that road coming in, they would've made it four lane, yes, all the way.
That's a, that's a big, I, I, that's a big.
Well, I mean, I've, I've heard talk of that, and that, and what I've got in my mind is, that's gonna really make Tabernacle Way school, that's gonna be hard to get into and out of.
I have met the, the, their, their plan to be, you turn me in and turn, you'll have to turn right, head back east, then there'll be a turnaround pole, like, they call it turnaround poles, where they roll outside. And that turnaround, east, uh, turnaround, eighty more, go west.
Right.
So it will be a turnaround line to be, be there, to, to.
Well, and the reason I ask, my, I got family that live right on the river, and I know they would've built, they would have to build, they're my access road back up to Hoover Hill. And so to get out. So board members, just wanted you to see this, this data. Uh, I think there's a lot of stories, we, you know, storylines in this. We'll get this to you, uh, we'll get, Dale, we've got another report, we'll get to it. It's a lengthy report, but part of it's what Brian was just pulling from right there. It's pretty, there's a section that talks about these different developments. I guess all forty-seven are in there, when I looked at it, this afternoon a little bit. But the next step of this is the, what comes up in November. Can y'all explain a little bit what's gonna be presented in November, so they know coming?
So, uh, really what it comes down to is it depends on what the objectives of the, the board are. So to speak a little bit more about what we do as an organization, so we, we conduct enrollment forecasts like what you're seeing on the screen here. Uh, we also have aptitude with and experience doing several types of optimization for things like new school signing, or consolidation, or, um, we look at all sorts of student assignment changes, if you're looking to balance the, uh, balance, excuse me, if you're balancing utilization across your schools. If there are things from a student assignment or facility planning standpoint that you'd like for us to explore, that's something that we could do. But it's very much, it's, the answer to that is, it's, it depends on what guidance you have and what your objectives are as a, as a board.
Do you ever come just right out and say, uh, here's, and, and when you come back, I would like to have, if we could do that, maybe not just a screen, maybe a printout where we can, we can look at it, because I'm probably the only one in the room that's struggling to see in that. But, um, do you ever just come out point blank and say, look, I'm looking at this area here. I don't see a whole lot of growth or a whole lot of hope, that you guys may just need to consider consolidating, closing, I mean, looking, does that ever?
There have been situations where across the state, we, we have made recommendations in that direction, yes, we have.
So when you come back, I know that's awfully a board decision, but that's, um.
But you won't come back with that, you won't come back with those options at the next meeting? You'll present that, and then we'll say, hey, we want you to go to this direction, and.
There's a time, I'd like to hear it, wouldn't you?
Well, I'd like to understand.
I would like to hear this bottom line. I don't see it happening here. You guys need to do something. I would like to hear that. Cause I think we're in a situation where we may have a bottom line. I don't see it. I mean, is that fair? You know what I'm saying? I mean, there's no, no growing, there's no, it don't look like it's gonna come, and you guys may need to think about, I mean, I guess you gotta, you got space for seven hundred, but I don't see you ever getting past two hundred or three hundred, I mean.
I definitely think we need to look at consolidation and redistricting.
You gotta what's best, you gotta spend your money wisely.
Um, you know, it, it seems like we, we have, uh, it's a problem, but we have some, um, conditions, and we have a system within a system, you know, as far as with the AT tax zone there, and ours is, you look, we're looking at twenty-five and twenty-six, twenty, twenty and twenty-five percent growth, or it's just on the high schools of that ten-year period? And all the rest of it is, is far shrinking. We, we, um, we're, correct me if I'm wrong, we're kinda handcuffed by, it's not like we can alleviate something in there, but I said, okay, we're gonna send more to Randolph and send more to, uh, Uory Ridge or something like that, because of the, the taxes. We can't leave them there, they're great. I understand, it's like, if we're, we're showing twen- in a high school, I think, uh, it's okay, it's kinda hard to read the number, the final number on that, but it's like, uh, uh, I think around twenty-five percent increase from now, not capacity, I'm talking about the numbers, uh, from current to the twenty thirty-five, thirty-six year, I think that's what that is. We're around twenty-five percent in Trinity, around twenty percent in Wheatmore. So if that's where all the growth is, but we can't alleviate anything there, and then at Archdale Elementary, if we're overcapacity, it's not like you can, can't send people from John Lawrence to Newmarket.
That's right.
Yeah. So we're, we're kinda handcuffed there a little bit, unless, you know, something.
You could take some off Trinity Elementary, you'd have to move them around up there.
You'd have to move them around.
Yeah, but you're having to move in a smaller, more compact geographical area.
You're only able to move in that district.
Right, that's what I'm saying, it's a, it's a small pool area.
But it wouldn't take much from Trinity High School to Wheatmore to alleviate Trinity's problem based on that ten years.
I understand, but you got twenty percent growth in one, twenty-five in the other, it's like, okay, it's, you know, when everything else over here is shrinking, you can't pull it down to what's shrinking, you can only pull, you can, you can move something from something that has grown, to something that has grown, but just not quite as much.
But you know, when we did those lines, or when they were for Trinity and Wheatmore, I would've never thought, in all honesty, that they would've lasted this long. I mean, and actually, it hadn't got any more off balance. Then, when we first started, Trinity was like, tore up because Wheatmore had more students. And then it, it, it caught up, you know, it's funny how that works.
Two thousand nine.
And they wore off.
But you would've thought they'd have both been pulled, but, I mean, the way things were going there, but then, they didn't bottom calls out.
Go to that map up there again. It had to, it's just the map of the area, it would be, uh, well, it gives it a little bit of, um, developments.
You said something about Ashboro, there could be an Ashboro in Randolph. What happens if like, what you was talking about earlier, you said it, Dr. Gay. What if Ashboro annexes or something, does that happen? Would they go to Ashboro City?
Annexing, annexing doesn't affect the school system at all. They can annex all they want, but that's, um, we have kids, I thought about that after I said that, we've got kids that are living, dead in Ashboro, going to, and are, know Marty goes up to Randolph, right?
So if they're in the city, they couldn't hand out with them?
Think about Tot Hill. City of Ashboro, annexed Tot Hill, seven years ago, that's a city property, but the, the school district.
They have a national address, we still.
Oh, gotcha.
School lines don't change. It's just their address.
If I go from my office to Wheatmore High School.
Where, where would that be?
I, I'm trying to see because.
Cause I'm thinking about eighty-five.
When you come up, um, all right, what's the road to Tees with Finchmont? You're going to, what is that road called, Mark? Tabernacle Church. When you're coming up Tabernacle Church from sixty-four towards Wheatmore High School, they cleared a ton of land. Cause I noticed it one night, it was dark, and I could, I was coming back, and I was like, what, what, what's different over there? Is there something, I, I've thought a lot longer, getting ready to do something south of Wheatmore High School, but I don't know, you know, back towards sixty-four. But I don't know that, is there anything up there down the Tabernacle Church Road? Is it all that? This one right here would be close. Is that where it would be? I don't, we're sixty-four guys. Is that sixty-four right there, Dale? Right there?
Yeah.
Where's the, over the tenders side?
So there's a ton of land. Wherever Tabernacle Church Road is in here, there is a huge tract of land that's been cleared on both sides of the road. They did this, I mean, it goes way back up in there. And I, I wondered, I, I don't know if that's in your forty-seven, I don't know, like, cause it doesn't look like it would be this high on the map. But see, all along, when you're talking about Wheatmore High School being underpopulated, I've always thought, well, we need to be careful, cause we don't know what's going on here. Is that gonna, if we move a bunch of people into Wheatmore High School, and then something goes on there, are we gonna have, uh, a problem? You know, and that's, uh.
Where you're talking about, I think it's four hundred acres, right there along the Creek River.
Is it those curves?
Yes, and, but I think all of that would actually come back to Uory Ridge.
It can't.
It can't.
I don't, it can't because of the AT tax line.
Do you know what the AT tax line?
I said, I'm not sure where far down it is. Does it, does it go down to, um, gosh, you know, where the old gold mine used to be, they'd cut the gold mine down, like.
That was our problem all along with Uory, is if we could've pulled people above sixty-four, but they're in the AT tax zones, they were going up into ATMS, which, you know.
Now, when you get up, if you come back one, one, let's see, if you go one road north of there, or I guess up, Kennedy Farm Road. Now, there's a lot of kids that live up that way that come all the way to Southwest. It's only like five miles from Wheatmore. I would like to put on the list of things for the board to see is where is the AT tax line. I think we need to know that. So I think I like the suggestion of this map coming back with our schools on it.
Do we have a copy of that somewhere more, or do we?
You're gonna get, you're gonna get, oh. But I like, I like the idea of the schools being here, so we see, just a, a view, and I like to see where that AT line is actually. So, um, so board members, I've heard a couple of things, I wanna try to, try to pull it back a little bit with, um, I heard a little, a lot of conversation about these guys looking at maybe what schools need to be consolidated. Is that something you would like them to look at?
I think so.
Cause I mean, we, you know, that's, that's a, that's a viable conversation.
We do need those AT tax lines, we agree.
And have they, have they been changed over the years? Like, none of that's been adjusted or anything since they were set up?
So, anything else, board members, you'd like them to bring back? And what we can do, Dale, tonight is you'll get them this, board members, you'll get this, and, um, that report. And how late, I, I don't mean this to sound late, but how much advance do you need before, I mean, you got the numbers pulled. How far to, how close to November seventeen can we get? We, we can't give you five hundred requests, not when we give to you on the fifteenth of November, and tell you we'll see you Monday night. Listen, how much lead times do you need?
So, uh, uh, if, you know, looking forward to next steps as far as, you know, in the coming weeks. You know, we have a lot of flexibility as far as how our data is set up in, in a way that it's in our system now, we know where these developments are, and we can estimate how many students are gonna come from them, and of course, we have a lot of your other data are pre-populated and ready to go, so we can, we can turn around those things, yes.
So we know three things we want. We want to see where that AT line is. We wanna, some ideas on what some of your recommendations might be on consolidating schools. And we want the schools back on that map, um, or on that map. Can, can you, um, with this information that you said we're gonna get, when tonight?
Yeah, we get it too.
Um, can we get on there, maybe, what is the talking points gonna be in the next meeting? So we can just think about what we're seeing there versus what's coming up? And maybe if we have questions, maybe send them to you. Well, here's three of them right here, so we'll, that's what I'm trying to, I wanna see what y'all, um, is it? Can we get a map of the attendance lines? Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. Do y'all have that?
Yeah, I would love to see where they're going out now.
Here's, I, I think a fourth thing would be.
I'd tell them all, wouldn't you, probably?
Yeah, yeah, I, I'm not.
I'd say all of them.
Okay, that was, well, I think a fourth thing would be, okay, so, AT tax line, schools on the map, the attendance zones, there's a third thing. Fourth thing could be any recommendation on consolidating schools. And this may be too much for the meeting, maybe that has to be another one, but any recommendations for shifts.
For what?
Shifts from, from this to another zone. Now, I, I'll tell you, board members, there's, should that happen, it would take a while for you to see the impact of that. Because of some of the grandfather and stuff you might choose to do, and we, we'll have to research some of that with, uh, that process. But is that, is that too much, Thomas?
Very doable.
And board members, that, so that gives us, where we might move somebody from this school to that school? What schools might consolidate? What are the school zones? Where is the AT line? And then what, where the school is compared to those, uh, well, you know what, if you do that map with the school zones, you put the school in the map with those things, we'll have it all, we'll know, then we will already set where, one of the, like, when you do that, we'll know that this little blue house is going to school X, cause they're, it's sitting in that zone. Or it may be split between school X and school Y, so.
Are there areas, uh, I guess, have a High Point address, they pay the AT tax?
There's High Point address, it's a combo, it's, there, there is that. Yeah, I want you to push your sail.
Yeah, I was, I was looking up the AT taxes on the map, and there, it appears there's some, actually in the Gilbert County.
Is, uh, the Holliday thing, High Point, around that area?
No, there, there used to be a little stretch off, are you looking, is it off sixty-two, kinda the?
Well, it's just going through eleven is, is what I was.
I never, I.
Or in, in the AT zone? I heard something today about that, and I don't know.
About what?
A High Point address being inside.
Well, see, here's what happened, Archdale.
There's a little piece in there, ain't there?
Well, there's, there's something off sixty-two, but it was more confusing, a High Point address, because Archdale never really, and they still don't, just do. What about, it's like you have your own little zip code local area.
They have one with High Point.
Yeah, they have one with High Point. Archdale does not have their own.
It does.
Yeah, they don't have their own zip code. That's, that's, somebody dropped a ball on that years ago.
I think we're gonna, I think when we get.
You look at somebody, call them, they'll have me.
I, I know that answer.
Gary, I was wrong. Gary is a eighty-five, not three eleven. It was eighty-five is what I was told, not three eleven. As far as on the map that I'm looking at.
Matthew's also with the group, and he wants to add something to this conversation, so.
All right, Matthew, good chance to be a he-woman.
Well, that's an honor. Your, your responsibilities you take seriously. You wanna be good fiscal stewards, and I love, you know, student first. That's the game we're all in this board, winning and supporting your kids. Just a couple of things in group decision-making, if you're looking at this, it's a lot of information in one night. Right? Um, as you're going through it, just a recommendation, having a couple, a lot of communities across the state and the region make the decisions. Number one, thinking through, um, what does it mean to you on questions and observations? And anything you do on an intervention level as a board, just be thinking about, um, as you're looking at that, what problems are you trying to solve? Two other contributions, as you're looking at the boundaries and, and in particular, your facility maps. Number one, facility conditions. I think I heard one of the schools is older than some of our board members, right? So, be thinking about that, and conjunction of that.
And then the other part is we gotta get in there. And so it can be compelling to make it work on a table in a board meeting, uh, but those transportation distances can be significant for children. So just to kind of revisit that, be, be thinking about the observations and the questions that come up. We can answer anything back in the lab. And then ultimately, what problems are you looking to solve as a body? And be thinking about facility conditions and transportation as you do it. And our team is equipped to help across the board. And we do house the school bus routing system Tims for the state. Uh, so any scenario you model up, we can show you what it would mean for busing and beyond and support the administration on the facility side as well. So we're a team here to support you, we know you're gonna make some good choices for your kids and, uh, love seeing the passion that you've got for your community.
Thank you.
We're not gonna keep it from you, Thomas.
Thank you.
We, we might charge you to get it back, no, I don't know how many times y'all come back, but, um, board members, this, I think this starts a conversation that, uh, it, it, I'm just gonna, you know, my, my take on it is, this conversation's not gonna be a two month conversation. It's got a lot, a lot of things we gotta look at and the, the things y'all, uh, kind of land on tonight are gonna kick this conversation into another level. So, um, I think there are a lot of interesting stuff gonna come, but we have some difficult decisions to make eventually.
So when we get finished with this, if we decide like, I know it's a process, but I was thinking easier way to do it. If you, if you have to redistrict or do anything drastic, if we could have your names and cell phone numbers. We will pass them along to anyone that has any issues with it.
Mr. Cook, you need to go back.
We appreciate you, appreciate everything you can do to help.
Well, thank you guys, thank you.
If there's one thing, I guess it's any county, but with, in Randolph County, I can promise you, just the smallest thing can get a lot of attention, you know? I can only imagine when you go, I mean, my gosh, you can, uh, you can, uh, little Jimmy slipped on the floor and if you don't tell a thousand people about it, six hundred's gonna send you, they're gonna be upset over it, you know? I can only imagine, I guess every county's like that, but I mean, I come up, you pick your battle, you know, I get, this'll be a big battle, but, uh, it's amazing how they operate. But with your numbers and them calling you, it'll help us a lot, I mean. Prepare to be cussed out. Thank you. Thank you all.
So board members, that's all we have for the work session tonight. Um, and, uh, if y'all have anything else, we'll, uh, adjourn.